I just need.
Then just do other.
You know, we need here.
Round it with spot.
Yeah.
And so I promise that I just need.
Let me, let me get my phone shut off. Okay, come on.
All right, all right, well, the time is six thirty one, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to a quarter. Thank you everyone for coming out to the September fifteenth planning commission meeting. Nothing really on the agenda to review, any of the other board members want to move anything around? Hearing nothing, moving on to comments from the chair and land use administrator. I have no comments at the time, Brian, do you?
Um, one thing is uh to follow up on the interim.
And and. And and there are rules that say you can't change your zoning bylaws. Um, and this addresses interim zoning bylaws. Uh, so I'm gonna read this into the record. Uh, hi Ryan, this is one of the many gray areas in municipal land use planning, but my read is that yes, you can, so long as the town meets the prerequisite set forth in section four, four, one, five, section A. Quote, if a municipality is conducting or has taken action to conduct studies, or has held or is holding a hearing for the purpose of considering a bylaw, a comprehensive plan, or an amendment, extension, or an addition to a bylaw or plan. Unquote. In addition, I agree that the planning commission and select board uh would want to include some explanation and basis for why the interim bylaws are necessary to quote, protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, and provide for orderly, physical, and economic growth, unquote. But I think that threshold could be pretty easily met. I agree with Susan that the prohibition on amending bylaws when the town plan has expired, it, the town plan expires, is for traditional zoning and subdivision bylaws, not interim bylaws. Parentheses, which are expressly meant as an interim emergency measure, unparentheses, period. Uh, interim bylaws can only last for two years with one year extension and can be repealed by a vote of the public. So there are limitations on them. If the town is already moving forward with adopting a new town plan, it would probably be the most practical sense to focus on that and amend the current bylaws once adopted. I also, parentheses, I also don't see a reason that the process to consider amending bylaws could not start before the enacted uh enactment of the town plan. That's um parentheses, let me know if that helps. So a couple of things uh that 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 we point out here. Um, we could use an interim bylaw exactly for the purpose they're intended, they're they're an emergency basis. We already addressed that at our last meeting. I actually spoke with Ross this week. He asked me what was going on with that, and I told him that um exactly what we had done. Uh, it didn't rise to an emergency level, uh, under our opinion. We had other work to do and and that we'll wait until we get there. So the interim bylaws are set at the table, they're they're done, yeah, did that. The uh, I I think it's important to note that the process to consider amending the bylaws could not start before the enactment of the town plan. I also don't see a reason to the process to consider amended amending bylaws could not start before the enactment of the town plan. In other words, you could work on the 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 bylaws, but you can't, you can't move forward with the adoption until the town plan is in place. And I don't know, I I don't know how deep you want to do that. I I guess if you had sections that were finished, that would be fine, but if you got sections you're working on, I don't know that you'd wanna start modifying your bylaws till you finish town plan. Seems how they're, the town plan comes first. And I think uh, I I think that about sums that up. Um. Is that okay, Dan?
Yeah, it's all good, it was changed for the correct when we made that decision at that last meeting.
Yes.
And yes. So I feel very confident.
The the only other question I have now is where do we get this file so that when you're gone and we're gone, it's not gone?
I have in uh, in the land use digital files um a folder for regulations that has the zoning bylaws, uh, some subdivision regulations and all the iterations of that and stuff like that, um, as well as um state statutes that I've had to reference, and then there's also a folder for um town council opinions.
Okay.
So I I have it saved there.
Good. Well, that's what I was hoping, thank you.
One thing that's found very useful when we've had turnover at work is sometimes people do a really nice job of laying out what they're doing as they go, and some people try to do it on the last day.
Mm-hmm.
And um, like as you build out structure, it might be useful to start kind of explaining what the structure is as we go.
Like on a, on a, either something that explains how it's organized?
Yours, you know, like, like, you know, read, read me, my news administrator.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Though I hope you're here as long as I am, so.
I I was gonna add, based on the comments that you and I just made, I don't want anybody to think.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's cases that that never is needed, but I've had both situations happen, and I know which one I prefer to pick up the pieces from.
Yeah, um, most of the, or I guess each town that I've gone to with inheriting all those digital files, it's often just a folder full of jumbled stuff, and I'm pretty hyper organized, so um, I think it's, it should be pretty intuitive, at least at this point.
So you have, uh, is it a paper folder?
Digital.
Digital, so maybe you should just make it a digital file that says interim bylaws and stick it in there as a back, so it's easy to discover instead of it's buried under something else, and then five years or ten years from now.
Yeah, I'll do that.
You, you could add my email issue, something crashes and now everything's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I don't think I reached that in that.
And then so then that raises the question is where's that backed up, Ryan, in case the world does crash? Is there a back, is there a digital? I don't know how.
Well, it's all, it's all um on the Microsoft One Drive, which is cloud backed up.
I don't think it's office, maybe not for all paperwork that would be involved with it.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not interested in keeping paper.
No, I was gonna say, yeah.
I think it is automatically backed up to the cloud, that's kind of the way, it because it's, it's like the Google Drive, um, yeah. But I will put it in that file too.
Like you did for the research, yes.
Um, one other thing, I think it probably makes more sense to bring up at the end, so we can have a little more discussion about it, but I went through the last two years of uh permits and just sort of totaled them up and what kind of category they fit in, so that's kind of interesting information to discuss. So I'll bring that up under any other business at the end.
That note you take care as well.
Uh, Brian, who you about to? So I was just looking at our agenda tonight and noting that I don't think we're gonna be able to get through everything before ten thirty tonight, and I'm just wondering, since we have a extra Monday in September, that we should have a special meeting next Monday? Because our, I can't see, because there's a lot of stuff here.
Well, not next Monday.
I'm sorry?
Not next Monday.
Your, I thought it was the first and
the work first.
Second and fourth, that's the fifth Monday.
Oh, next Monday's the next Monday?
Yeah, this would technically be our second meeting, but Labor Day, we didn't have a meeting, so that's what's throwing me off a little bit.
Oh.
It's the fifth Monday, that's what he said.
Okay, I got you, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I think we should press, press ahead.
I mean, I feel like we're really making some progress here, so if we're, I'm willing to come out.
I I'd go so far as to say, I don't care how far we get tonight, we probably don't have a meeting on on the, on the fifth, because we missed the first one to begin with.
Yeah, that's better.
But uh, another way, let's, let's, let's talk about it at the end, because
Other business.
If we don't have, if we do get through a bunch of this, then Ryan would have to work pretty hard to make up an agenda for Monday that is actually functional for us, I would gather, I would guess.
Well, yeah, that's just part of the evaluation and the testing process.
Yeah, well, so I I I also think that we probably could get through some of the stuff tonight if we uh. Yeah.
Just wanna bring it up in front of the meeting, so.
All right, well, let's get going.
Thank you, best keep up.
Even the saying that we have a half hour for A, B, C, D, and we could just keep on moving on and go through, and then we kind of write off if we wanna do that.
I think the, the natural resources one and the flood resiliency are fairly minimal, I don't think it'll be the same. Um, and we've seen the land use one a few times, so I just hope some sort of minor changes, and then we can go over the maps a little bit. So the utilities and facilities is really the, the dense one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's uh, let's try and get through it.
I I I, and I, I tend to agree with Hank that I don't think stopping at a half an hour, moving on to something else, and having two or three projects moving forward that are incomplete, I think it's better to get through, finish one and start another one if you have to, and and then that, rather, at least get something done, I think is better.
All right, we'll, we'll log to get some stuff done. Uh, comments from citizens regarding items not on the agenda? Technically, you are a citizen too, so we.
Okay, well, it was pointed out to me today that in the town plan, when you scroll down to page number two, the town weather shield is spelled wrong.
Nice, okay.
And it was pointed out to me that the entire document has W E A T H O. S. Yeah, might be all the year listening to me, and that's been that way since two thousand seventeen. Unless my copy is the only copy that has it spelled.
Page two as in the table of contents?
Yes, starts there and goes through the whole document. Last thing, I wasn't supposed to put this seven thousand times, and I was embarrassed to say it. What does the first one say?
Uh. I'm seeing it spelled right on that page. Oh, at the, at the top, oh, the, the header, oh, yeah. Nice, okay.
I was embarrassed that it was pointed out to me today, and I don't, for a concerned citizen, so I will let it go with that.
That's probably gonna be the easiest correction of the concern and citizen. Well, I'm glad I get brought up and we can get it. So um, any other comments from citizens regarding items not on the agenda? Anybody online? Yeah. All right, approval of meeting minutes for August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to appro- approve the minutes with corrections if necessary? So move. Ryan has made the motion, who was the second?
Howard.
Howard is the second. Any discussion?
Yes. Line eleven.
Right, I love line.
Yeah, I'm the only thing on it. M I C H A E L.
It continues.
Mike Edo. Uh, and I, I, yeah, it's, yeah, that's like the first time I've seen that in any years.
And you? When I went through it, it felt like it captured the meeting pretty well, on everything. So all in favor of approving the minutes for August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Any opposing or saying nay? Any exceptions? The meeting minutes have passed with the correction of Miguel.
That's, yeah, I'm sure that'll be found.
Yeah, uh, land commission mission statement, I don't remember six. I see we have an updated version on in here. And then that was the original version down at the bottom with the second copy, right?
Right, um, no, the, the one below is the, is this but clean, so it doesn't show all the changes, all, all changes accepted.
I feel like the other city made mine, it kind of just simplifies it into, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a mission.
Yeah, okay. So what I did, I condensed the number three, number six into number two. That's, that's really the, the main thing.
Yeah, I'm happy with this. Any other comments from members of the board?
Um, are we, did we do all the discussing we wanna do on this last time? Cause I'm aware that we're gonna get through a bunch of stuff tonight.
We discussed it for a while last time, and then it wasn't recorded, so I kind of went on memory, so there might be some stuff that we discussed that, that didn't get done. So if you see anything.
I did think of some things. Um. Under our goals, that makes whether she feels special. I said, so the first bullet, line fifteen, preserve our forests, surrounding rivers, wildlife, and scenic views. Wildlife is simple and understandable, but doesn't, isn't, isn't super broad, but not really important.
What would be the change?
Yeah, see, that's the thing I'm not sure about. Um. And I, and so I, you know, that's why I started with, are we gonna discuss, I'm still, I'm not. More, more pertinent, I think, um, I think it feels awkward that the, that line fourteen is protect what makes water feel special. And then I, and then the bullets are preserve, support, respect, I kind of like the way that few words at the beginning work. Um. Respect seems, respect, I don't quite understand what respect our town's history and cultural heritage means.
That's what it means, understanding.
Yeah, that's exactly what I thought, understand, or honor, I like understand better, honor with work, uh, highlight, it sort of feels like we're aiming at that. Um. Giving root. Yeah, I'm not sure what that means, especially in our context.
So I, I take it as respect meaning that goes back to what makes our communities so special.
Right.
Right, so that's why, you know, you could put it, you could change that word, you seem, I'm sure, why not, I understand.
Um, my, my question is for you, Hank. Um. Um, are, are you perhaps both focusing on the language that's better suited for bylaws? This is a town plan.
Well, that's a town.
It's a concept. Uh, 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 and and at the same time, has to have uh, some strength in it, because it's used at, at, at two forty, and at two fifty.
This isn't even town plan, this is our mission statement.
Oh, that's right, this, that's nice, this is for us, it's not so, it's not even that.
So, um, I think, so I guess understand our town's history and cultural heritage makes me feel like that understanding supports future planning. I don't.
But I think, well, understanding it, those two words, understand and respect. Understand means, okay, I gotta learn some history, and I gotta learn some stuff, and, and, okay, now I know it, so I understand it. Um, but that doesn't give me any direction of what I'm supposed to do with it.
Hmm, that's a good, that is interesting, yeah.
So saying understand and respect, I don't know, takes a bit of.
I, I, I think, I think you have to understand it to respect it.
And so it was part of the reason that I wondered about respect, was because here we are in our mission statement, telling people what to do, or like what to think, rather than that, that, that they should be, that, that learning should be part, you know, it just, I mean, I don't know that it matters a whole lot, but it just.
Well, but to me, it's, it's not so much more the general site as it for our board.
That's right.
It's a mission statement, it's not.
Oh. Since it's directed at.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, in fact, so we're, all right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that, that, so, yeah, that's a good, that works better.
Or when doing all the efforts we're doing, we should be respectful.
No, no, in fact. It's, I'm good, that's an excellent explanation, I'm perfect, I like it that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
At this document, which I like how it lays it out, it's very planning commission-esque, actually, when it comes down to it. Just out of curiosity, is ours way bigger than the other boards and commissions that come through? Cause didn't this all start off just as a mission statement? And we've taken this kind of a step beyond with our goals outlining it and.
But I think that this is really integral to those.
It is.
I think, I think if you just put a mission statement out there, you need your goals to back up the mission statement.
Right.
They go hand in hand.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting uh, making anything up, for sure. Uh, I was just curious, some of the other boards, are they similar in format to this, or?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't seen any.
All right.
But, uh, so, we'll submit it to Julie and see, does this, does this feel like it's totally out of place or something?
Well, I, I like it, again, it also, it feels very planning commission-esque.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I started to be worried here. I know, if you're arguing about language, we'll make enough stuff, but, but you know, it outlines it really clearly, concisely. It straight to the point, and you know, really holding it here to our face, like, are we doing what our goals, mission says?
And do you need changing a few free words?
I, I, I have one. And it's, it's line thirty, uh, strengthen our local economy. And it, it says encourage infrastructure. Uh, comma, such as broadband to support work from home arrangements and entrepreneurship. I, I, I like the idea of encourage infrastructure, I'm not sure I like anything after that. I, I think there's a, there needs to be a better kind of description of what we're talking about when we say infrastructure. I think there's a lot of different types of infrastructure that need to be considered. Uh, and, and we used to have lists, lots of lists in, in our zoning bylaws, and I know that's not what this is, it's, this is guidance from these boards. Um, and again, such as broadband, and that, and that makes sense.
So what else would you put in the planning infrastructure?
Well, I, yeah, well, what, what is the infrastructure that, that we have? Yeah, I, I, okay, with broadband, um.
Town water.
E or electricity. Um, without power, you're not gonna have much of a business.
Well, I wanna direct the question to the local economy, cause that's what we're dealing with. What infrastructure is necessary for the local economy? I, I can see how broadband fits, but what, what other? Uh, 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 what I'm trying to do is find a better descriptor for infrastructure, infrastructure.
So you could change broadband to something else you wanna pick.
Uh, um.
Well, I, I always grab sewers only because that would be a big economic drive. But, you know, I know that's a big reach, but we'll talk about that more under the utility and facilities chapter, because I have some questions on that. Brandon and I won't discuss it over long.
I, I think if I was a new member coming to the board, that, that would be my question is, what infrastructure? Wh- when we talk about the local economy, what can we do about the infrastructure for local economy? Is it buildings? Is, is it, is it, uh, you know, for business? Is, is it, um, is it actually our zoning map? Uh, is part of the, you, you know, are you getting into, you, you know, how do you build an economy if you don't have like a site or an economic engine? Or, a- a- and if that's even possible, I, I, see, we don't have some of the other infrastructure that, that would normally go with that, which is sewer water. You know, it's a.
But, yeah, so it says in there, um, support work and home arrangements and entrepreneurship.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I, maybe Georgia, it's not the best example, but.
Well, probably it's also had significant um, expansion too, of the past couple of years here at that.
Why don't we change it to say encourage infrastructure to support work and entrepreneurship?
I, I think, I think one of the things I thought of is to encourage.
Economic opportunity and entrepreneurship.
Sorry.
Encourage infrastructure. Um. That meets the needs um to support work from home a- a- arrangements and entrepreneurship. Um, a- a- and, and maybe any other um, you know, cause it, it doesn't just have to be work from home and entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship, I guess that's uh, what is that? What's entrepreneurship? That's, you know, I, I'm building something, I'm deciding, I've, I've. Someone was on my business.
Yeah.
How about just to support the population, or the populace of the town?
Well, that's kind of the way I was.
But, but we, but we are under strengthening our locally economy.
Yeah, yeah.
How about encourage infrastructure to support work from home arrangements and encourage uh, economic development? And then you can do such a, if you wanna do such as for examples, then you can do such as at the end.
See, and, and, and this, I, I guess, well, I used to work with David for almost, I don't know, ten, twelve, fourteen years, I worked with her husband, he was an engineer. Our boss, when, when I screwed something up out on the floor, and, and it needed to be fixed, he did not want me to tell him my idea. Come to me, tell me it's broke, go away. That, then we would get together, and I would have ideas, he would have ideas. But to tell somebody your idea, contract them i- i- in, into a, a, a line of thought where they don't get to their idea, and they might have a better idea. You just never know. So I, that's kind of what I'm trying to avoid here, is, is, is pinning somebody's brain down on this, this idea. It, it's not the only thing that, that you should be thinking of, there's other things. I liked it.
Okay, yeah, the word that is the word that sort of triggers your own thoughts. Encourage infrastructure that supports work from home arrangements and economic development.
Yep.
Okay.
On the subject of economic development, there's a few spots in here where we put growth, and I think we, as a planning commission, that economic opportunity and economic development both seem more specific to us wanting specific things, which in terms of planning is what we want.
So in that line number twenty-nine in the clean version, change growth to opportunities?
Yeah, r- r- rather than just trying to grow something, trying to grow in a certain way. And rather than, and say grow in a certain way, it could be said in, you know, as economic developer. Where, line twenty-nine says promote responsible economic growth. And, you know, the responsible part maybe takes care of it, but it just, like, there's a couple others, at least one other spot where we say growth, and I feel like economic development and economic opportunity are both better ways to say the same thing.
I, I think the same thing, I, I think, I think when you add the responsible, I think that's a subjective term. That, that, that could, you know, I, again, you're steering somebody's thought process, the idea to promote economic growth, figure it out.
Yeah, and I would say promote economic development.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of.
Development is like changes in lots of different ways, not just growth.
Development is changes in different ways, and it also seems more like it's thoughtful, rather than just saying like box over there, good.
Mm-hmm.
More stuff here, good.
Yeah.
And, and, and there's, in, in section four, there's some, uh, section two. Um, where do you say it?
The top line.
Yeah, anyway. And, and again, we have a pre, like a word before growth that helps guide, you say update zoning rules to guide growth, which, you know, that, the guide part makes it better. Makes it better, but I still like. Guide development or guide, you know, anyway. And we say it in the heading of of number two, lest I forget. And again, it's got a pre, like a word before that helps, you know, balanced growth, so anyway. In all three cases, we we have like a. Word before that, anyway.
I I I'm seeing that.
It it, but in general, I just feel like growth isn't the best word compared to the other options.
And 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 for me, on that very same line, protect areas that should remain rural in character, okay?
Where's that? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh protect areas that should remain rural in character. Um, we have. Uh lots of lines that talks about protection and conservation, and we have areas for that. Uh I I get a little bit concerned, when you start putting these words protect and conserve on every single. Uh district. That you're always looking to run into some sort of wall, that's gonna be a problem. Why do we have a housing shortage in the state of the month? Okay, cause we did. Um, yeah, it just didn't happen. Uh there's, you you know, probably several levels of regulation that have caused it for different points and periods. But you know, so I can't put your finger on any one thing, but I think those are the kinds of things you gotta be careful of. We we. We already talked about our mission. Preserving the rural charm and natural beauty. Uh and strong community values. Um, when you start talking about encouraging smart balanced growth. Do uh to what extent do we need to define that?
Well, I think you could fix nineteen very easily by just putting a period after sense and. Get rid of the second part of that and protect areas that should remain rural in character, because we do talk about what makes sense here.
Yeah, and the first part of that does that, that's exactly right, Brian, just put a period there, get rid of the second part of that.
And and if it cleans that up, simplifies it, again, because this is a guidance document.
For this board.
Yes, it's really hard to forget that.
It is.
So I would put a period after sense and just say and protect areas that should remain rural in character, because we do talk about. World in our mission statement, it does talk about that. Makes a lot of sense to me, just to take that. Things that shorten it up.
Um, I got a pet peeve with the the first bullet under number one, the word preserve. And then the same word preserve up above, I think preserve makes more sense related to like the town's history and cultural heritage. But when we're talking about forest farms and um things like that, it aligns with the with the rest of the document better to use the word conserve.
I'm I'm good with that. And my next one is thirty five. Encourage sustainable transportation options, if somebody tell me what that would be.
I used to take the bus to the upper route.
This is a rural town.
No, it was super handy to get on the bus.
At the parking.
Okay.
Neither of those are town town organized things, but they're both in our town.
And and they're not really about getting around our town. That that that's.
But we're a bedroom community, I mean, everybody's coming and going all the time, so.
One of the things to encourage that type of thing is just to make it more well known, like the fact that the mover does make house calls to bring. People who can't drive anymore to, you know, doctor's appointments and things like that. Yeah, it's it's all just sort of a a general point, I think another thing would be allowing for things like electric charging stations. Um if that, if there was a. Well, I wouldn't say that in there, just as an example to what does it mean for a board to encourage sustainable transportation? Um, not that it's prohibited right now, but you know, to make that something that happens.
It it I wouldn't use that sentence to do what you just said. I that that would be encourage alternative transportation options.
You don't like the word sustainable?
Well, no, I'm just using your example of of uh charging stations, that's an alternative. Uh mode of transportation, in in my opinion, not, it may or may not be sustainable, we don't know yet. Uh I I that that's what I mean, I don't encourage sustainable transportation options.
And the mover is not that sustainable necessarily, cause if the funding gets cut, nobody gets through the bus anymore. Alternative might be better.
I'm just not sure what we're saying here.
Well, who may not know, until somebody comes in with that idea, easily.
It's something that we haven't really talked so much about, but planning more broadly, I think often deals with transportation.
Maybe just take sustainable, just have encourage transportation options. Just, um, that covers everything broadly.
It seems like it should all be under that heading of infrastructure, to me, charging stations are part of infrastructure. Doesn't need to be. Separated into sustainable, it's infrastructure.
Well, now that I agree with. But but yeah.
You need to focus on sustain.
Uh I I'm not sure.
That should be sustainable.
But 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 doesn't all of that come in plan for safe, well maintained roads, cars, bikes and pedestrians, coordinate regional partners on transportation and infrastructure needs? It's already there.
That's why I need, I'm not sure you need that third.
That that's what I was getting at, I'm not sure that third bullet needs to even be there. I I'm just, I'm just not, I'm just not sure.
I hope the town plan says the bus will be good things somewhere, because it wasn't for me, but it doesn't need to be in here, I agree.
I do believe that the the town plan. They've talked about it.
Talks about current.
To jump on to another one here, line twenty four, control the rate of development and avoid overburdening municipal services. Doesn't that land more of the DRVs?
Uh we we write the laws that that they work under though, right, but they're the ones. Yeah, this is for this board.
I wasn't thinking that.
But we say all of a sudden, all of town is R one. That one definitely overburdened municipal services and a few other bits.
We probably have a large meeting too. Everybody gets four of them.
Back there, we're saying, okay, you know, again, it's a vibe and stock of it, and it's just supposed to have us realize the moves we make. We can't ever determine all of the consequences. And they will come back and haunt us.
So in the sake of time, should we move on? I'll come back with a draft that of all the stuff that we just discussed.
Strike thirty five, because thirty four sort of talks about that.
Strike line thirty five.
Yeah.
And infrastructure transportation and infrastructure needs, so that improves the bus. And the mover and maybe things we're not even thinking about.
I'd like to strike forty.
Work closely with the select board and town departments to turn plans. It's easier just to plan.
It seems much easier just to talk to each other, I don't see that being a move. This is one recall, we were, yeah, I guess we work closely with one of the select.
I would say. I would say we're pretty much good, so we're fine with those edits right there that we just came up with. Why don't we just go ahead and throw the edits in and that's it and send it, that way we don't have to come back to this for another meeting? And then find more edits.
I'm sure we can change it at any point.
Yeah, most of what we did tonight was kind of word sniffing stuff. Even though we took out four sentences, they were sentences were already included somewhere else. So basically.
This is really not an actual document, it's just a.
It's 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 for us, so print and move on. We probably should, we probably should vote to adopt it for the board, so when it's ready, but.
I'll make a motion to uh accept this document with amendments that we discussed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to accept the, whether it's the or the planning commission, mission, goals and statements with the above mentioned edits. Uh Brian made the motion, Mike made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay, and any abstentions. Okay, that's our goals and statements.
Perfect, calm down.
Alright, moving on to town plan re-adoption, land use chapter and the future land use maps. Right, how much has changed on this, or are we pretty much?
Um, so I went through Jason's comments and once I started uh looking at, thinking about the future land use map and its categories. Um which the maps that I presented in the past were sort of categorical in terms of like what type of development and all that. I think it was probably getting a little too busy for a future land use map. And so I provided another one, sort of a simplified version that aligns much closer with the text of this chapter. Um, one of the other things that his comment was, um, it didn't really talk enough about. What what is the current situation, and so I added that first two paragraphs, what is Weathersfield, you know? Existing right now, it's called the land use snapshot.
Have you seen this where?
Um, and then there's a section about planning, so those those two sections were basically. Where Jason thought there was a lack of discussion, so those are added. Um, I won't go through them unless you have points you wanna bring up at this point.
Not a point, but on line one ten, the end of this, that sentence ends with parties, and I think that word should be stricken.
The goal is to provide a space where compatible commercial and residential uses can occur to provide a space where compatible. I just.
Can there simultaneously and augment the success of both?
Of both, okay.
Commercial and residential uses don't seem like parties to me.
Makes sense, yeah. Of both.
Right, that's that's.
Um, and so in editing the map. Um, I realized that where we have steep slopes and high elevations under the preservation category. That uh aligns more closely with the conservation category, the steep slopes and high elevations might still be suitable for forestry and and things like that. Um, so what's, so I had it under preservation because development is prohibited on it, but it's certain places it's still. Um being used, conserved. Yeah, so those I moved, or I I think I just kind of got rid of them, I might have added a sentence under conservation. Um, but. Um, you know, when I had, when I started mapping it, it didn't make sense to break all those out as preservation, that nothing should be done on those. Cause what we talk about is these are the most sensitive areas that that should be protected. Um, so what that really left was wetlands and some of the biological natural areas. I only, I think the only ones that I removed were um large forest blocks, like the whole Pike's Peak block. Um, and then I think there might have been a big block along Mount of Scottney, things like that, where forestry is occurring, so um. So I basically left the more specific isolated ones, there's lots of interesting wetlands and rock outcroppings and and things like that. So that will be reflected on the map. Um, I added a line about um connectivity and fragmentation, cause he said that there should be a little bit more in there. Um, that was two seventy, and I'm just gonna, I'm just keeping, keep going. Um, some minor word changes, um, I elaborated more on the neighborhood areas. And rural residential areas. And how those are different. Added a little bit more to the commercial section. Mixed use, so I kind of just added, um, hopefully clarified and not, didn't make it more busy.
Um, I did have a little note on the neighborhood area, where you have, as mentioned in line, uh three seventy eight and going down. Where the um subgeographical area of one unit per three uh acre or density. Shouldn't that be like one unit in a smaller area, because those neighborhood areas are more concentrated. Smaller lots in bigger lot areas, so I don't know if the three acre thing is really kind of like inaccurate when I was describing it, or.
So. Well, well, so Jason's comment was that we need to be more specific about density. On when we call out these different categories, um, and so. My understanding of the neighborhood areas that are, which is the majority of them are outside the villages. That's mostly kind of rural residential is the way we think of that, um, or or. It it's still rural, so we don't want it to be too dense, we want it to be less dense than the village, which is one acre. Um, so I felt like three acres is probably the most appropriate, given the zoning districts and minimum lot sizes that we have. Um, so outside of those neighborhood areas would probably be. Um, more similar to the conservation ten acre. Um, those neighborhoods would be still rural, but but neighborhoods, so they could be three.
Is there any need to talk about in the neighborhood areas of existing nonconforming lots in here? Because they do exist.
Um, I don't think so, I I feel like the town plan is more pure than that, to get into all that nuance.
I I I thought of one that might be good for the first part of this, where where you get into the future land use planning, I think it's uh. Starts at eighty three. And I don't know where to fit it in, uh uh um, I I I don't disagree with anything that's written here. But but what I thought might be missing here, uh that might be good for the town plan, because. We've talked about it a lot and we're working on it, and that is P U Ds. Um, we need to somehow uh uh address that. Yes, or future plans.
Maybe that's a goal or or whatever, you know.
Um, I I think, well, in this section, you're talking about future future planning, future planning. And and I I think that density, it it because this specifically talks about how the rural. Residential areas are. Um, I think you were just talking about one house, one acre, one house, three acres. Um, the P U D is gonna take that and change that. Um, and and that's your density that you need. Right, um, and 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 being able to do that.
Having not developed the language that violates for that.
But that's what the town.
Put it in a goal, put it in as a goal. Because we're hoping that next year.
In that case, I think it needs to be both places, because you need to talk about it in here.
I think, I think it might be a goal and I'll double check on that, I also talk about it. Cause in to some degree, like this whole chapter is basically talking about future land use planning. And it talks about P U Ds and accessory dwelling units under the um, under the neighborhood areas. Um, but it seems like that should be, that that also, as an alternative location, it could go under the perspective conditions. Under residential or, yeah, residential uses, under residential uses, prospective conditions.
Look, if we look at history of the P U D. The history of the P U V, it it's been around to what, twenty or thirty meters or more? I'm letting you do we have in Weathersfield. I think we've had one application and that is gone. Um, I don't think we have any P U Ds, I mean, the closest thing we've got to a P U D is. So so where I'm going with that is, it maybe it wouldn't hurt to talk about it in more than one place.
And I I like the idea of like putting it under future land use planning, even if it's one of the bullets here. You know, that we we have number ninety two, just stay those, support development. Uh aesthetics, you know, because I think P U Ds are more important thing that we need to. Put in here, is say we're looking at the town plan for the next seven years.
So I I agree with that sentiment, I think this this section is just too general for that specific. Uh a mention of that something that's specific, it says sustainable, uh suitability to support development aesthetics, like that's so broad. P U Ds are a very specific tool that that I think we wanna mention, and I think probably the right place is under residential. Perspective conditions, and then we can talk a little bit more about using P U Ds. Or the future conditions. So I think it should be in there multiple places, I just don't think it fits with that first.
Okay.
Yeah, with that residential, you do.
Selective conditions, that you you do a great job of organizing this stuff better than we would, so. I will not argue with that.
Um, let's see. I added an objective because Jason said we need to talk a little bit more about the Act two fifty tier one B. Uh, op- option, so I basically just said that the town will work with the regional commission to evaluate that.
So that's more of a statement for regional.
That, yeah, well, it's one of the statutory, the, the town needs to talk about it. I think I had one line in there and he said that we should. That was his suggestion, and so I thought that that was fine.
I think we ought to assemble a um petition to remove Act two fifty from the state of Illinois. Not, not in its entirety, uh, because I do think it, it serves purpose, but I, I think that there's a, I think it's. It's an original concept is outdated, I think. On top of the fact, okay, so why do I say that? Act two fifty came in the early seventies, zoning came shortly thereafter. I think we adopted our first set of zoning bylaws in nineteen seventy-four. Act two fifty, I think was nineteen seventy-one or seventy-two. Today, most towns have zoning. Zone, a town plan and zoning bylaw regulations. So I don't think Act two fifty should be involved in as much.
Is this something that's directly referenced to in the plan? Sorry, Mike, I know.
You're good, yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. Yeah, we can break this up.
If you want comments yet.
Um, yeah, I was gonna switch to maps though, so.
Before that, uh, lines two oh four and two twenty-nine kind of say the same thing.
Two, say that again.
Two oh four, two zero four, it's biological nature areas.
Yeah.
And then I actually line two oh seven says several of these are, these are upland areas which are protected by zoning laws, which is great, because that's the upland section. Then we go down to twenty-nine and says the same thing, including that several of these are upland areas. Are in the wetlands also, so which seems complex.
Right, that is wrong.
I read, I read very, very, very late.
So if that says a wetland, that, that's, that's good there.
Several of these are wetland areas, yeah. For upland and wildland, yeah, maybe, yeah. So we should say upland and wildland, that makes sense, yeah. Um, two forty-one, what, what do I care about this? Oh, nah, maybe I get this better now. Um, I still get confused about whether we're describing like what we'd like to see conserved or what. Or what? The whole conservation thing is complicated.
Which line are you looking at?
I'm just, what, what is? Uh, just was looking at the sort of header section. I mean, two forty, I just, that, I put in two forty-one, but I mean that top paragraph. Conservation land, it just, it's complicated between whether we're talking about what has a conservation easement. And what should be conserved versus what we think should be conserved anyway, it's, and I guess um. I don't know, maybe it just is a little confusing.
Well, maybe it needs to start out with more of a clear definition, because this is where we're first laying out the idea of that category.
Right, and then some, I just wondered if the title should be.
With, yeah, maybe it's all. Well, I see conservation, I see thou shall not touch this land period versus, you know, our large lots that contribute to the aesthetics of. That area, so.
But, but that's the mis- that's the misnomer that I wanna address. Like, I want people to understand what conservation is and it's not, don't touch it. Conservation by definition is use it. Which is, which is like, it's surprising.
What conserve its, its, its special means or, or?
It says use it responsibly, don't spoil it.
Right, but a lot of people get it. Conservation, you know, thou shall not.
Well, and then there's, and then, and then it's, it's. Anybody who, who has it not. Is willing to put enough skin in the game can get a conservation easement on whatever size lot, you know, if you're willing to. Put in enough money to make somebody, so you can get somebody to take that on. You can get, I'm sure they would, you know, somebody would, would go ahead and give you, you know. Let you give them an easement and all a bunch of money to take care of that. So it just, it's top, it's just confusing and I think. You know, we run into discussion about that. The differences between what the word means in different contexts.
Okay.
That's exactly one of the main things that shot down two thousand seventeen, or sorry, the earlier. Future land use map was the difference between conservation C ten and what, uh, Howard Pen mentioned would be like R R ten.
Right.
Just gonna bring that up, they'll go, go back to that, i- i- that, that original discussion. I- and that I was a part of, uh, in fact, I asked. Jason, I don't remember, I didn't know this, I didn't know whatever, I remember exactly where we were and what the question was. What is conservation and, and can you identify on the map what land should be labeled as conservation? And he created that map. And, and that totally changed what, what the, what the zoning map looked like, where. The term eighty percent of the town is in conservation. And it reduced that down probably about thirty percent. And, but then I, what do you do with that other land? Well, okay, make the other land R ten. Uh, just get, get it, get, so it's not in the, in the conservation language.
So, so, but, but so I think your, you have the sentiment that you were trying to get Jason to answer was what land should be preserved and you're using conserved like interchangeably.
Yes.
And that what I'd really want to get across, and maybe I need to be more clear with definitions right off the bat, is that preservation is don't touch. Conservation is use it and use it responsibly.
Use it as a resource.
Right, like farming, building barns, conservation, hunting's conservation, cutting trees is conservation. Um, I'm even arguing that uh, that gravel pits is a form of conservation, which is probably controversial, but. I'm happy to, I'm happy to back it up.
I think that's fine with me.
Yeah, so.
I think that needs, needs.
Yeah, needs to be laid out.
Simple, you know, cause this is a conversation that we've had stirred up and it'll be stirred up again, no matter what we, how clearly we see. Explain it, but. But if we can say line two forty-three says conserve means use.
There are another place in land use where we're just very high level, thirty thousand feet looking down on it. And where we're talking about these briefly, then we can again bring that up. So it's mentioned a couple of places in there. So you have preservation land and conservation land, but to make it so, it's referenced in a couple of places, they're very super, super. Clear the difference between these, like you have wetlands and uplands, it seems pretty, you know. That's a little more basic, but this one.
So, so yeah, I think because this chapter sort of lays out the rest of the town plan, like the land use is sort of the overarching. Top, it covers the transportation chapter and the housing chapter and economic. Um, so I think, yeah, that, this categorization should be sort of the framework that we look at all the other chapters under. Um, so yeah, I think that's important, because when we talk about the types of roads that are suitable to certain areas, that's gonna be different. Um, a- and housing, the same thing. So yeah, I think that's important to, to, to lean back on, on this layout. Those, those three categories of preservation, don't touch, conservation, use it, um, and development. Developed land, which is basically we're getting away from uh. From the land as its resource and now it's like buildings and infrastructure.
I like it. Uh, both as part of this, if we ran the town plan, we just simply adopt that new description or R ten.
We, we can't do it as part of this plan, but that will be top of the list.
But as I said, my main point is that all these things that, talking about this. The one both conservation land versus, you know, whatever. Once that R R ten is in place, all that goes away.
Right.
He spelled out R R ten and conservation, and it'll make all of the rest of the town plan documents clear. But until we do that. We have to keep going on this thing back and forth.
Yeah.
Do we have a specific list inside the town plan that says we have? Villages, hamlets, R R one, R R two, all that, and just add in R R ten?
Not, not in the town plan. It doesn't talk about the uh, the zoning districts.
Well, yeah, uh, is it worth putting it in?
Um, I don't think so, just because that's probably going to change. So this town plan should guide any changes that happen um to that, to that zoning map. Um. And I think if we make, if we add those categories now, the, and we go to look at the map, we're probably gonna have to come back and change it here too.
So Howard, do you have a way that we could implement something like that or thoughts on ways to do that better?
I don't, I mean, it's in the town plan, page fifteen sixteen talks about the uh categories, land use categories and descriptions. Like a village, hamlet, mixed, you know.
Which is what we did away with in, in this land use chapter. Um, I think if, if that was like the priority of the board, then we can have a zoning bylaw amendment. To, to change that name, that, that would be the first thing to do.
You wouldn't want, you, wouldn't you wanna have that supported in the town plan?
I think it should be, and I like the fact of, like, yes, we're, we're streamlining everything inside the plan, but when I went through and read it when I first moved to your town. It was also a wealth of information kind of giving me a little bit more backstory on why some of the things are that way. So while we do wanna have a streamlined, the history is still important too in the general album.
What if, what if under the conservation, because we, we do talk about conservation in here, right? What if under that conservation section? You, you, you put in a, 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 a statement or a, a proposal that, that, that you should, that perhaps we should consider an evaluation. Of the uh conservation lands, uh, and, and a potential uh shift uh to split. Uh, to, to C ten R ten, so that, that you have the two categories.
I think, yeah, we, we could put it in as an objective under, under one of the goals and say, change, change that. It might honestly already be in there.
I think the future, look to, to go that way, you, you gotta have something in the town plan steering.
So there is an objective that says the town shall review the zoning map and districts with regard to allowing for easier development and appropriate. Of appropriate areas and to restrict development in areas needed for protection of shared values and resources using the future land use map as a guide. Um, so I could be more, I could add a line sentence there and be more specific and say the con- the conservation ten zone should be changed to R R ten.
Say that, I don't, I really don't wanna say that. I think the land that belongs in conservation needs to stay in conservation plus C ten. Eh, but, but I think there's other lands and that, that earlier, that map that Jason created back then shows. That there are other lands that are in C ten that, that would probably just be better suited to be R ten. So it's not panic or zoning, it's just not conservation.
Does our current C ten zoning. Restrict in ways that are conservation minded? Like that's sort of the thing, like we have this thing called conservation ten and it already is.
I, I think it's only called that because it's a larger.
It's just, it's, there's nothing but the name that's wrong. So, in fact, if we did just change it to R R ten, nothing would change. In terms of uses. And would we actually, what we're actually creating is, would we, would we have some restriction in an area? That should be C ten, cause currently, right, but I mean, that's the, that's kind of what I see this as. And, and really, we should talk about it when we get there. I don't, I think, I mean, it makes sense to describe like, here's this sticking point. In discussions. You know, I, it's, it feels like a, it's a hard. I s- see the value of putting in some kind of description about this. Challenging discussion that we've had several times. I don't quite know how Ryan does that. In a way that makes sense in this, in this document.
R R ten versus preservation then? Is, and just get moved.
But, but so, but, but hang on, so I think this is, this is the complexity of this discussion, which is why in the town plan. I don't, we don't need to get into all those details. I think that specific point about the conservation district being a confusing title, we can mention that. Um, but the, the objective that I think addresses the, what we're trying to get at is the town shall review the zoning map and districts with regard to allowing for blah, 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 restricting, blah, blah, blah. Um. In alignment, um, using the future land use map as a guide. So it, we need, it is basically saying as an objective, we need to review our zoning map and zoning districts. And we can, and we can work through all those complicated details.
Conservation land wouldn't be a zoning district, that's just like, you got a wetland in your backyard, sorry, you can't build a house in a wet. That's, so, so it's not like we're gonna change some of our C ten to a preservation ten, it's just. Two different. I don't think we should, we're gonna have C ten at all, we're just gonna have R ten, because it makes sense.
But that, making sense is exactly where it all fell apart before.
Well, but, but see, I have to disagree with that, Hank, and the reason I disagree with that is because there were some certain things and conditions. Under conservation that you focus on to say, this is the reason this land is in conservation, that we want to. We want to pay attention to certain, um, what, what, what are the words? Um, resources. Uh, th- th- that are here, and, and we, so we're calling attention to that, and I don't want that to go away. But, 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 but then there are other areas that are in that zone that don't have those resources and don't have those concerns. Those, that's what I'm, that's why I'm saying I think it's split. And, and that conversation that I had with Jason at night, it, he, when he created that map, that was to identify. The land in Weathersfield that, that, that fell into that criteria of conservation, those resources that we wanted to focus on. That needed to be focused on. And like I said, those, we, we don't want that to come out, we don't want that to change. So we don't change the whole C ten to R ten. I don't think you wanna do that. I, I don't want.
Yeah, I, I think we should get, get there when we get there.
I, 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 I agree. I, I just was thinking that, that i- in my mind, that, that I, that, if there's some direction. The, the zoning bylaws are the implementation tool for this, for the town plan. So if you want your, your, your implementation tool to follow the town plan, you might want your town plan to tell you how to get there.
Yeah, although I, I think the zoning districts may be one way of doing that, but it might not be the only way. And I'd rather not get too prescriptive at this level. Cause, cause I think there's a lot of different options and m- making lots of different districts. I, I'm kind of a, in favor of simplifying the districts, like in, in Rockingham, they have. I think there's like sixteen different zoning districts and it's madness and I, I don't see the reason for all of it.
Is there? Is the goal that Ryan said this discussion falls under good enough or do you?
I, yeah, I, I, I trust you.
Brings us all together.
Moving on to the maps.
Okay, so the first map.
We almost came, sorry, the, the two, this is quick, two fifty-eight says. Being a natural land cover type forests are the healthiest land condition. Can we change healthiest to most stable or two fifty-eight? Healthy, healthy is just like, I don't know, it just seems a little squishy.
Two fifty-eight.
It doesn't have to be stable, that's just a word that came to me.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, three forty-nine.
It would, it would be the most stable if you did that, right?
Hmm, hmm, that'd be very stable.
Um, you know, actually, while reading this in here though, uh, something about the forest and I just think about.
Which line?
Uh, while we're still in section A of two fifty-three, but of this one here, is to put in some sort of responsible. Uh, forest management, because here we are in the midst of an ongoing drought. There's so much dead wood out there, there's so much everything that's just a tinderbox. We should probably mention responsible forest management of some sort of way in there. Instead of just letting it drop and hit the ground and let it rot away slowly, which is good for the forest bed and everything in there. But also, we don't wanna create a bigger hazard because of, we haven't been doing responsible forest.
Is, is, is that a intro paragraph or a perspective condition?
Just, I have no idea what to put in here, just see.
Just, I have no idea what to put in here, just seeing on the forest and what we're talking about it. That maybe something in there to like, just to prevent wildfires or just encouraging responsible forest management. Something along those lines showing that we do acknowledge that it is starting to become more prevalent issue. You know, you have wildfires raging up in Canada, all over the United States, we've been lucky. But, you know, I do look outside a lot of the woods around my house, and it is kind of a ticking time bomb, unfortunately.
Yeah, I can add a sentence, but that.
To the three forty nine, we say, it starts on, it starts on three forty eight. There's extraction operations may require municipal zoning permit and or a state act fifty permit. There may be other permits, so maybe we should say a municipal, a zoning permit and or state permits. Just to be a little less specific. To cover our.
That makes sense.
Wasting everybody's time with like.
God, how would you change that, earth extraction, uh extraction operations may re- uh may require?
A zoning and or state permit or permits.
Instead of act two fifty specifically.
And or state permits.
Yeah.
Just because like if you have more than half an acre, I think it is unique stormwater permit, if you have, I don't know what else you need, but like, there's. Probably a thousand permits you could need.
Could, could, what, can we, wait a minute, can we back up to three, uh new earth extraction sites? So we're not talking about somebody building a house and and digging a hole, right? We're talking about a.
Mining, we're talking about.
Exactly, we are, so the word may is not gonna be there, it's gonna be shab. Okay, uh uh even though this is the town plan, it's or we'll. Earth extraction operations will require a municipal zoning permit and any other federal state requirements, permit requirements. Whatever it is, it it it, you know, you just, you know, you never gonna, you're never gonna.
Will, shall, will, that's, you're right, you're right, it's, we, you know, we don't have to, I mean, either, either they'll, if they, if they do happen to call up and say, I need a permit, and somebody says, no, you don't. It's a good day, very unlikely to happen.
I I will say this stuff, sometimes people can can struggle with interpretation, but this is not the zoning bylaws.
Right.
Is this explained more clearly in the zoning bylaws, what is required for earth extraction sites?
Yeah, there is a standard for that use specifically.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear. Yeah, that that's the easiest way around uh all these other permits is just, you know. And that way, that way, as they change, you don't have to keep editing your, your document either.
Well, if you act two fifty goes away, we wouldn't have to edit our document.
Or if it changes, which it does frequently, yes.
Three ninety two, three ninety two, unless you got something before three ninety two.
No, no, I was just wanted to kind of get this moving along to the maps, so we can tackle some of the other stuff.
What's wrong with three ninety two? Oh gosh, I'm finding it. Oh, the rural countryside that separates the villages and neighborhood areas is either forest land, farmland, or used for residential purposes. Or used for low density resident, I don't know, for some reason it didn't roll off the tongue for me.
Um I actually had marked that line too, to add home based businesses, cause there is another use that happens there.
Residential, residential purposes.
That is, that is a home based business, yeah, you're right.
And it 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 rolls off my tongue, it's fine. And and I'm okay with.
Well, sometimes.
He wants to add um home based business after the residential.
Which which may be a more commercial, like if someone has a mechanic shop that's not necessarily, that's normally considered a commercial use or something, even though it's. Home based business, so it falls under the residential sort of umbrella.
Five sixty four.
What was that number?
I probably just didn't read what was in between. Um at the end, we say scenic and historic research is along with agriculture, agricultural areas and open spaces, and I think by open spaces, we mean. Undeveloped, and I wonder if we should say undeveloped, because open spaces. And agriculture feels like there aren't any trees there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's it?
Um on that same page on line five seventy two, I also, it it I added the words using future land use map as a guide. Um I also made a note to mention the planning map that I'm gonna share. All right, should we go on to the maps?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so the first map in there is what I changed to be called the land use planning map. Um it was what I presented, or it's similar to what I presented before um as the future land use map. But when I started getting into the idea of what are the different categories and how does it line up with the land use chapter, and the way that's laid out. It's uh, it it's just a little bit more complicated, and I think it's really useful for seeing where things are. Um and we can use it for planning purposes and things like that. Um but the next map, if you continue scrolling. Um is what I am proposing as the future land use map. So in the legend, you can see it's broken down into the same categories as the chapter, preservation land, and it shows those biological natural areas and wetlands. Which are basically the, the don't touch areas, the stuff that we wanna protect and. Um and then the next is conservation land, which is the majority of the town, so it shows the different forest blocks, which this isn't um. Totally finalized in terms of like symbology and stuff, but I put, um let me know if you like it or not. I labeled those forest blocks, cause it was interesting to me how each of them surrounds one of the peaks in town, basically. Basically, those are the high points where roads didn't go, um and now those are what we have left as forest blocks. So it's kind of interesting to think of it that way. It shows the conserved land, which I don't know if maybe that doesn't belong on the future land use map, it's. It it makes sense on the current land use map, which it is, um but in the future land use map, I don't know if that gets. Too confusing, like in some respect, it's helpful because you can see where concentrations are and where it could be expanded. Okay, and I'll.
Well, there we are back into what we serve versus.
I was about to say, I'm I'll gonna add a section where I'll talk about conservation um. In terms of the deeded development rights and how the, you know, the use of the word conservation easements is its own thing.
This, the way the, like, just a quick, you know, I didn't know a lot about what was going on. The previous future land use map has all yellow versus this is now green, which. Cool, and the color's cool, but now you look at that, you're like, oh my god, they're taking the entire town and putting it into conservation. That's where I'd be afraid of seeing where this would go into. Con- concerned land un- under this title is land that's either in a conservation easement to the state or is deeded.
Right.
And we make that yellow, maybe, or something like that, something not green.
Cannot, yeah, I can, maybe I can do the boundary in yellow. The like the outline, it's outlined in darker green.
Yeah, something that makes that stand out as something different, cause that is something totally different, really, which is what you were just talking about. It's a little confusing the way it's presented here. I think that's important, because then you can look and you say, wait a minute, the the tho- those are properties that that there's either deed restrictions. Or uh 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 state um conservation easements that are in place.
Yeah, and snap it right to the property line is perfect for that.
Yeah, it it's something that you you get to just, something to make that stand out. Cause that's not really a zoning district for us, right? But that's land that is, you can't touch.
Ryan, and for the the heading conservation land, could that, maybe, maybe we, could it be conservation slash working land? Because those deed restrictions don't prevent, tend to not prevent logging in agriculture.
I don't think you wanna get too co- too confusing on that.
Well, but part of it is that conservation is, this is this confusing discussion. So if we say conservation slash working land, that that opens the the door to the idea that. By conservation, we're set, not saying you can't do anything, we're saying that. It's working land.
Maybe.
Because we have this conservation preservation.
So so I think what Hank's saying is, um P, if if like Joe said, if people see this and are get concerned that the whole town is shown as green, and that's, and everything under. Conservation is what green is, they're gonna say, whoa, this is really dramatic. Um but if if it's brought out directly instead of saying this is conservation land, but this is conservation and working land where like things happen. It's not.
I think there's an even easier way of separating this out, is that whole section of conservation land, we have rules, conservative forest laws, all that. Separated into preservation and then development, so the rule can go into the development.
But the forest blocks are not preservation. Because.
But they would fall into an area that we'd wanna quote preserve.
No, we wanna conserve it, we we want people to use it, like the forest and the resources, you know, whether that's recreation or or forestry. Um but we want, preservation is like um a fragile bog ecosystem, that's like a small isolated area, that's like. There's really no human value that we should be extracting from that.
So in the conservation land where you have the conserv land, though, that is part of the deed that thou shall not touch.
Yes, yes, the, uh, no, but but it can be farmed and it can be logged. It it's basically development rights that have been sold.
These damn damage.
Well, so in fact, what if we take change conservation to working land, because we're trying to. Talk about, we're trying to have a a new narrative in a lot of ways here, rather than getting bogged down in this old conversation that. Is hard to get.
It's true, although I really wanna address this. Conservation, preservation, the as synonymous, was there not? Yeah.
Which somebody then also has to read, that's a trick. Yeah, no.
So putting my layman's hat on, if I didn't know anything about whatever we're doing today. I just pulled these maps up, and it says land use planning map and future land use map. I think even just tell people what a land use map is, because if it's, if someone walks in here and has no experience of any of this.
I could have a blurb on the map that explains the map.
Clarify, and the future of saying this is what our, what we would think is the direction of development. Land use planning map is this, because otherwise, it's really confusing.
And define, define preservation and conservation on the map also.
Yeah, okay.
I hate to even bring up another layer on this map, don't do it. I think there needs to be some sort of reference to the existing zones in here, though, cause. You look at land use planning maps, like, oh, is this the new zoning map, is this what everything's gonna be?
This is not a zoning map.
So we can, we can make that clear right off the bat too, but I I think it, I think. The zoning districts especially should not be shown, because I think all of those things are are things that are subject to change that. Hopefully will be more reflective of um the future land use map. Not saying that any, not saying that any of these categories being shown should be districts. Um the the land use planning map is a little bit closer to what districts could could like come from. Um but yeah, zoning districts should should prop, should generally be snapped to parcel lines and things like that. So, and and especially if the, our current zoning map doesn't really align well with what we're talking about with the land use. Section and and these maps, it shows like our our three um following all the major roads and then C ten sort of outside of that. And it probably makes more sense for a lot of the land outside of that to be R R three, and some of the land in that road to be C ten, like. The that's sort of, that map, when I look at it, it's almost direct fragmentation. Like it's saying, develop in these linear strips separating these islands of, you know, of forest or something. But it's more nuanced than that, and um. Yeah.
No, I wasn't meaning to, it's, uh, it's like, something for us to be able to, you, sorry, I guess I should clarify that, but. But like, looking at this and seeing where we're at, and like, having another overlay that we have that shows the zones.
Yeah, so when we, when we get, or or we, I can do it sooner than that, but I could. I could have an overlay, so you can see, look at the land use planning map and turn on and see the, where the zoning lines are. So we can talk about changes and things like that.
I understand. Real quick question, um state um conservation uh easements. Do do those get documented in the in a D state conservation? Yeah, yeah, like, like, um, I think the uh the Stevens Farm is is in, is is uh in conservation. Uh they, uh, what is that called?
Well, there's a forest, there's a forest legacy program, which is federal administered by the state, they do land easements.
Okay.
There's a lot of different land trusts, like the Vermont Land Trust.
Land trust.
Yeah, not state, but.
Uh but those are deeded, okay, so. When we look at the conserved land, parentheses, deeded restrictions.
Yeah.
Put it right beside it, and then, and then, like you said, maybe outline those. So that those are clear that, again, we're not talking about a future. Uh zoning district, we're just talking about land that's identified, that's in some sort of annual program. Uh outside of zone altogether.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. Um so some other things, I added a outline around uh Downers and the Bow. So we we had, I I outlined the villages as I saw them, sub- subject to change if anyone has comments on that. Um but I felt like those, the the Bow and Downers needed their own area. And when I started drawing it, it it's made me realize how much smaller they are and why they're, they're a little bit different. Um but they are concentrations, and we would talk about um wanting to develop in certain areas, one of Jason's comments was. Well, we have all this sort of, the what I show is purple, um as future development outside of the villages, and the state says we want to develop in the villages, and that doesn't align. But I think it was a miscommunication, cause what we're really talking about, and the way that I have it titled here. Um well, I guess I titled it future medium density. Um I I maybe on the planning map, I called it something else, I think I called it, no, I didn't. Um, uh the idea is that those are areas where we're, we're expecting development pressure to be there, because there isn't already natural restrictions. Like steep slopes and things. So, so I think, hopefully, what um clarifies that to him is that we, I called it medium density and said three acre. So that it's not like we're trying to concentrate density in these areas, we're just saying that those are areas where. The the normal sort of rural spread out development that's occurring is likely to occur here. Because it's.
If not, in the village, there's no waste water, and not in the, not village, cause you don't.
Right. Yep, so I I was thinking about pulling him off, and I ended up just changing it to try and clarify the density differences. The only future high density development I showed in the Perkinsville Village. Which, which is basically the same ideas, we're not necessarily saying we need development here, but that's where land is available. And that's where it's, it's sort of not already restricted by steep slopes and wetlands and things, and that's also where it aligns with what we're trying to. To talk about in terms of locating land use.
Now, when people look at this and see where we've outlined village edges. Versus what the state designated village is, and what we're trying with the village. They are expanding exponentially, does that? Becomes another tension point that I see people coming up to, it's like, oh, I didn't move here to live in the village, I don't live in the village, but now you're making the village that much bigger.
So the state designation is just the village center? Is that, that's what it is, it's just the designation and it's the center of the village. Right, yeah, and so that's where certain. Grants and things are available, but it doesn't really define anything. And so I, I mean, the villages themselves, as far as I know, haven't really been delineated before. Yeah, when we're talking about the village, this is kind of what we're talking about. It's basically walkability to that center. Or areas of development that's at a higher density.
Properly pass some sort of quick little snippet in there to say, this is why we chose this line or something. Rather than just letting people run wild with thoughts, I don't know. No, I like let them run, yeah, with the thoughts. We gotta have some reason for them to come to a meeting. Hey, I'll do it again, I don't care. No, I I'm just thinking ahead on like, you know. No, I'm, I'm just thinking ahead on like, you know, you, you see this actually.
It talks about it a little bit in the, in the mixed use section under, so there's a category for. Uh, developed land, that's the, that's the land use category. And then there's mixed use and it talks about those villages. Um, and so i- if you read through that and you think it needs to be clarified, that's probably the location to, to do that. That, well, it's on line four eighty-three.
So any other thoughts or comments on the maps so far? Just sort of kind of move along a little bit or?
Well, I, the only thing I had commented was on the four ninety-three. Under the mixed use and talking about the villages, these areas where density shouldn't be the highest is in the land of the state land use planning goals. Currently the one acre minimum lot size is in the village and how practical there is just is decent, unless you lack it, shared wastewater systems. So is that where we should have a statement saying that we should explore options for wastewater or encourage the development?
I think that's laid out in sort of the.
I just, I just, we say it's a limitation, but I don't want to shut the door on. Some new technology or I don't know, I just.
Um.
Seems like we're saying, no, that's it.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if I would put it in that paragraph. May- maybe it's an objective, or maybe it's in the utilities facilities chapter. Cause, cause this chapter, you could include basically anything. And in, in practice, it should probably be, and I think, once we kind of get through these chapters, I think we should revisit. The goals, policies, objectives sections, like of the whole document to try and organize that a little bit better. But I think, I think that, that point is an important point to make.
The world is saying, because we say, due to the lack of shared wastewater systems period and not giving any kind of forward, forward guidance or. I don't use the word hope, but there's a solution out there. Unfortunately, the solution's tied to big dollars. You notice we may give a grant something, I ain't going.
Brian, one of the other things to consider with what we were just saying is that maybe the money comes from a development. But you have to create. Incentives, well. Incentives is one thing, but. By increasing the density, so it's also affected the bill. You've got to create zoning districts or the, like, I think I used the term economic engine earlier. Uh, you know, you identify an area that this is, this is gonna be, you know, uh, I ran into this in New York. Place much like I live in now, a garage, two car garage, great, I'll put a little business in there. No, he won't. That's a residential area, put a business in that garage, they, that, done. Um, that's why we have an economic engine and that was Clifton Park. The area that I was in, in Clifton Parks, if you've ever seen that, uh, economic engines. It's something. That, that Clifton Park, Half Moon, all of that. Uh, that whole area, it, it, and, and the, the zoning is. This is what it is.
I don't know, and maybe this is not the right place for it, but I don't want to lose sight of just saying. For lack of shared wastewater systems, you know, I'm just trying to open a door here. Because of that economic driver we talked about, and I might, maybe I'm not expressing it clearly tonight. Or it goes into the utility facility section, which is probably where it developed. I just want to leave this as a maybe, I guess, the average traffic.
Yeah, yeah, just so that this ends up somehow in the minutes. I've always wondered what happens with sasasimons when it's no longer an extraction site. The one. Pedimental whatever happens out there is the egress in and out needs to change. I mean, it's, they're getting away with it with trucks, I think, because it's. Few and fair between, if you had an industrial site out there, we got dirt, dirt, dirt coming going, that even work, where, where they are. Yeah, exactly. Um, but yeah, but what is it become, what is it? What is that out there? We have to be thinking about, that got missed at the airport area, that turned into residential down along the side of rum line. That's crazy. Um, so you know, that kind of stuff needs to be on the map. That's what we're here for.
Brian, the other, I think the other thing about this is that's kind of, it's kind of a controversial point, I think. To say that we want to increase density in the villages. I, I know that, that that's what, but at the same time, I think there's a lot of people who push back against that and it might. I, I think to get into the, the weeds in that probably makes more sense, not in this kind of overall.
Yeah.
Chapter and in the utilities when we're really laying out. Or in the economic development or in the housing chapter, when we're really laying out sort of the groundwork. Cause I think we want to support a statement that we want to increase density and. Yeah, without building it up too much in this chapter. Cause I think the, the other thing is some people might look at that and say, uh, there's this barrier to density and that's why I'm comfortable here still. You know. Yeah, so. So I think we should, we should build that out in another chapter.
I don't think we had a great discussion on the land use chapter and we should probably move on to some of the other things. We got on our agenda. Uh, how would the board feel about, do we want to go right into natural scenic stuff, or would we like to? Pick up some of the uh, the newer things on the table?
We might be able to wrap up the natural scenic one because we've gone over it a few times.
Now, now, if I was going into natural scenic, if we can get one line, then we off. All right, let's jump into that.
Well, another good question, and the, the scenic vistas and all this, uh. Conservation Commission was, has been working on that. But I wasn't there for the meeting where they started introducing it. They've come up with this list. Of scenic vistas. And some of them are like, you know, mile or half of highway or something, they're just extremely broad. And I don't know. You know, how they got the directive or whatever, just what parameters were put on it, but my thought was that these were basically. You know, the root of this whole thing was, you know, PUC review for solar and toleration, things like that. And so we were trying to. Pick out the really specific sites and define the character of the town that we don't want messed with, rather than trying to preserve. Well, two miles of road here, three miles of road there and, and whatever, but I'm just. A little concerned at the direction of Conservation Commission seems to be heading versus what our initial. Concept of what we wanted is.
So I think um broadly, they're starting with a long list.
Yeah.
And ranking it all to narrow it down and then pick out those things. But I think the idea of scenic resources was just a little broader than point vistas. And there might well be an area like the center grove or something. Or a, or a section of road that rises high enough to be something that we want to call out as something like that, more than just a point. Um, but yeah, that it basically is an inclusive, that the list that they're working with is an inclusive. List of pretty much everything that's scenic about the town. That, that's a stretch. It's not that long, but um, they're gonna go ahead and rank a bunch. You know, using specific criteria so that when they say these are the best of the best, this is what we have, um, then it's more defensible.
So you also have to have supportive documents to say why this is, or you know, and how it scores the relationship to others.
So I don't, I don't think that if they named, if they named fifteen roads, I think maybe one or two might be. Raise, rise high enough to be put on the, the, in the town plan as things that.
I mean, and I think that also goes to defensibility. So if someone ever challenges the same views, you can say, well, yeah, we did do this and this is the criteria. And here was the original list and it was long and then we knocked these out because they didn't, they didn't rise to that bar. So there is some good to being over enthusiastic and including things that you'd most like to red chop that.
So when, I just get based on to the scenic people's views and all that stuff. We kind of fall into the thou shall not touch territory, right? Or thou should not build a new word of straps.
Thou shall not spoil.
Well, well, define spoil. Uh, question that I'm going with this is, let's say this is the land that we have. They got a two mile stretch road, I think I brought up.
You mean i- in the naming and, and putting it in the town plan or when development is proposed?
Scenic vista area. Suddenly we're posing a restriction on somebody's property. Are they involved in this process?
So, um, so, so the cra- so as far as being added to the town plan. You know, just like anyone else can be involved in the process, they, they. It, it's an open process, but we're not necessarily going around inviting everybody um individually. There's also no, other than PUC review, there's no regulatory aspect to this. Well, it's for the PUC, but it's also to identify what the town has. And, and what makes the town itself.
I was coming from on that because, like, say you have some of these big scenic overlooks and we got all sorts of stuff on it. And then, yes, just because you look over a fifteen mile area, doesn't mean you can't do anything down there in that fifteen mile area. But where you have like Senate Road, for example, if that is very clear why it is what it is. But if we're looking at adding something else in there. Is that landowner aware of what's going on with their property on the municipal level is where I'm getting that.
Yeah, so, so they, they're only as aware as, as, you know, in terms of this town ban, plan being put together as they're involved right now. But they'll also be involved at the PUC. If so, if they're proposing a large solar site or something, they're gonna be aware of that and they're gonna be going to the thing. Um, and if their, if their neighbor is doing the same thing, they'll be, they'll be aware of that as well.
That's not, no, I'm saying like. You have property, it's acres of land in one of these places and you might have. The um, the field that overlooks Mount Sketney or wherever, whatever it is or off mountain. All of a sudden, you want to split your land apart, you want to build a couple houses out there or something like that. But oh no, it's in a scenic resource area. That restriction's been placed on your property where you didn't have that equal to say about it.
Okay, but it's not a restriction. There's no regulation tied to it.
It's a visor. The more lands in the PUC will. More.
The utilities, stuff like that.
So if you wanted to build a house or, or a barn or do any of the things that are listed in the, in the zoning bylaws, you have the same right as anyone else to, to do that.
Another argument that would blow most of what you just said out of the water, Joe, is. Uh, Skyline Drive, if you look to the east fifteen miles, you're looking at New Hampshire. I don't think we control anything.
This part is coming from is just trying to make sure that. Well, some former owners' rights also really don't create problems for us that we didn't perceive.
A problem like? Say, say that again.
Unintended consequences, like, and that's all I'm looking at is like. You know, yes, we want to protect the things that are out there that use the stuff. We obviously want to keep that stuff here in town. But what if that opened up a lethal can of worms or something like that for something that nobody anticipated? That's all.
I, I, I think that what if is the conversations is coming, but, but I don't know that it fits here. I, I mean.
We would have to have discussed what the regulation should be and then pass the zoning bylaws to regulate. People's land based on this list that's getting created now.
Right, protecting scenic vistas, that seems to be what you're talking about.
I think the whole purpose of, sorry, I can interrupt you.
Well, well, yeah, the, I, I think the conversation of how you're going to protect and what you're protecting. Comes at a different stage, is, is all I'm saying. I, I don't disagree with you, Joe, and I'm glad you're aware of that stuff. I am as well. Especially those unintended consequences, you know, that's always my last question. But um, I, I, but, but I, I think. For here now and identifying what are natural scenic historic resources, I think that's. You, you know, we, we have to do that. And then we move forward into the protection phase and, and, and whatever that's gonna be.
Which there hasn't been any discussion of because it's all about the PUC.
Well, yeah.
Right, and I like that, we won't discuss.
Unless there's something so special that everybody agrees that we don't want to change, I really can't see that.
But it'd be more like historic or something like that, right? Yeah, you know, something like that, so.
Natural scenic and historic resources.
It's all one area, so uh, I, I just food for thought. I'm not looking for us to have an answer or anything on it now. Which is, I don't know, I see it as something that could pop up and be, wow, I wish we thought of that, you know, five years ago when we were working.
Name one section of this town plan or zoning bylaws that won't do that.
So, so I share your, I share the concern for, for over regulating people or surprising people with new things, but. There, yeah, I think the idea is that there's no regulatory impact of this.
This should give people more control. Basically a better seat at the table when the, like, the, the land.
If, if it did, if it did go to the PUC, then they can.
Because of this language.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so far it's.
So, so if the conversation down the road, if we're talking about zoning bylaws and scenic vistas and things like that. That's where we're gonna want to be really careful about the way that we talk about regulations if that conversation even comes up. Um, but I think at, at this point in the town plan, we're just talking about things that, that the public sees. You, it's mostly, they're all from public places and the things that the public enjoys.
Case of application for self power comes by the center church or something, we have the tools and we identify that as a resource.
But, but also important here is that's not, none of these scenic vistas are in this town plan at this point, so. It's, it's probably an amendment for down the road anyway.
You should work on the actual town plan.
I think it was this guy over here. We don't know, I, I was just, again, food for thought on that, so, sorry to kind of pull us off a little bit. I was bad. Moving on.
So, so minimal changes through the first half of this.
Um, before we get to the second half.
Okay.
Last time we talked about, and I appreciated after the addition of the historic. To talk about the old fork, but on line forty-four, we say deer can feed on twigs of young hardwood trees. Perpetuating shrubland can work in a first forest. This is within the pre-human discussion of our forest. And I just feel like. In all likelihood, the, the, the dynamic between deer and hard, and hardwood regeneration was different back then. So, I don't know, I feel like we should take that bit out.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I, I thought, I thought you'd go, you'd go back ahead of that, uh, like thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. Uh, the pre-storm forest is dynamic and ever changing by the forces of storms and the presence of wildlife. Wh- what about, it, probably the, the thing that changes it the most is the presence of humans.
Which is why we added the historic. Yeah, no, I, we fought about that last time that we added it.
Is it really that?
What the hell really matter? The history of it?
This, we have this nice little introduction, parts of our conservation.
Well. And it's. I just feel like it's like in the current climate of, of over deer population, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But let's move on.
Well, no, I think, I think that's fair. I think we can get rid of it. The only reason that it was there was to provide an example of how wildlife influenced things. But yeah, no, I think that's fine to get rid of. Okay, alright.
Example I can get behind, that's even smaller, you know, I can, I don't have problems with.
Yeah.
Be historic, dust or there.
I cut more trees last year than the beavers did.
You must have been hard. One ninety, one ninety, we say, one ninety, we say, what? Rob, maybe it's a different one ninety. Anyway, there's a line one ninety where we say the T O W instead of the T O W N.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Sure we weren't towing, I think we were town. It's a one ninety, but it's not the one ninety that we're.
It's one, oh, I see one ninety. Where does that repeat?
Anyway. Can you control F the T O W?
Yeah, yeah, oh. That's, uh, okay, it came in on page. On page uh seventy-three of the packet. Although that's a different, that's a different, yeah, what is this?
Chapter, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's in there.
Comment on that then.
Uh, yeah. Um, I have a change on seven sixty-three. Let me see, seven sixty-three. Okay, so this is an objective. Under the goal, increase the protection of identified natural scenic historic resources with non-regulatory tools. Is fifty-three. Six, seven, three, or seven sixty-three, se- seven sixty-three. The line is encourage, so this is under objectives. Encourage owners to place eligible buildings on the national registry, and I added, or Hank added rather, the. Words owners need to be apprised of the significant restrictions and reg- regulations that go with doing this. And so I was going to change that to any potential restrictions.
But if, but if you're on the national register. Yeah, I'm not sure.
The, the, well, so what I learned and what the, the document after this shares is the only restrictions that apply are. Are projects that are, that includes federal funding. So, so there practically are none, um, there, there could be some. If it's tied to federal money, there could be some if the town adopted new regulations.
See, but this means, this, so this right away says to me, if I were a national register, there's tremendous restrictions.
Where, right, it should, there isn't, so it should just go away.
It should just go away, before you say, now, federally funded, national registered projects.
Not say that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Well, may- maybe I did if we, uh, we had talked about getting that information.
Found a doodle bit that we have in here, uh, seven sixty-nine, seven sixty-one. It's just the um, mentioning of one thirty-one for the scenic highway, which we mentioned.
Which one makes more sense, where's the other?
The other one is, uh, five thirty-five, five thirty-nine, and it's pretty much the exact same thing. They have a comment on there where. It's under roads.
I don't know, I kinda feel like it makes sense to have it in that discussion as well as an objective at the end.
Which objective number?
Seven fifty-eight.
One's a little more explanatory, maybe.
Well, the one that's in the text of the chapter sort of talks about what, what, what's there and what it is, and then this is basically saying that. Um, something should be done about it. It is, but they, but they serve different purposes in different sections. Vermont Route one thirty-one along the Black River in Cavendish is designated as a scenic highway, so that doesn't make sense as an objective. This designation continues in Weathersfield, the focus along the stretch of highway is the Black River. The focus continues to be along the Black River from the Cavendish Town Line to the Down, to Downers. After which, the focus becomes Mount of Scutney, the designation should be continued, so. So you could delete that last sentence because we talk about, we, we talk about it later on.
Yeah, I guess also just looking at as a goals, a future objective versus something that we're all gonna talk about, okay, recognize inside.
Yeah, that, that first part is more recognition and description of what's existing. And then, I, I mean, in the future, I would imagine that the objectives or the goal section will be used kind of on its own. In order to support a project or something like that.
Right, the, the grant application will say goal number three. Not all from the actual document yet.
So whenever you're ready, we did include uh. Jason's um, information that Hank got uh, related to. The regulatory impact of scenic roads as well as the regulatory impact of historical structures. Um, and then we included the Crown Point Road, or not the Crown Point Road, the class four road policy, which we had talked about a little bit. The policy?
Yeah, on uh, seven, seven, seven.
Of seven, seven, seven.
Or I might have lost our notes, remember you?
Um, I was just making mention after this, this chapter, there's a few documents related to scenic roads, the regulatory impact.
Yeah, I wasn't looking to open up the can of worms.
Okay.
I'm happy with the way it's stated.
Oh, you might, how did you on the Crown Point Road section?
It looked fine to me, it's the same what I asked for, I think. Keeping the landowner turned out.
In the, in the discussion, it's all.
It turned out that it said more.
So.
And I had remembered.
So that section.
I didn't have.
Seven, seven, seven to seven eighty-one. What, what's the, what's the takeaway there, or what's the end goal, is that remaining or is it being deleted?
Seven to seven eighty-one. Uh, what is, what is there in the document is what I believe should, should.
Should, should stay.
I just wanted to make sure we have the original.
Okay.
Language on the right so that we can discuss it more if we wanted to.
Okay.
And I'm not very happy with the way it comes through on this. I think I had no idea we were gonna go down such a deep.
The, the objective here with what was written up above. I mean, what was written up above was, was um, basically what Mike wrote out for me at the time. So I have a collectible, but.
So, does that pretty much wrap up our scenic resources or uh, natural scenic resources chapter? Uh, we need clean copy to go over, any other comments or something?
We didn't change much on this one, did we?
Yeah, great, but the, I mean, changes were very minimal, I don't know, I guess we probably should have a clean copy, but.
I would say that if the board is happy with the minor changes that we've made on this. I say we consider this chapter a big checkmark.
And present it to the select board?
Don't you want to send the whole town plan?
Well, we had been talking about, we'd been talking about going chapter by chapter so that they're not overwhelmed with.
I think we can just present them with this is what we're at, but send them all, oh, oops, sorry.
When, when, when the thing is complete and ready, they'll get the whole document. But just to keep them kind of aware of things that are going on, rather than having. Two or three meetings to get them familiar with what the town plan, what it all says, cause we're asking them to sign on to it, it's better to sort of give it to them in pieces.
All that final draft for us?
Yeah, right.
I made, make, make a motion to uh, move the final draft to the uh, select board for review at their leisure, I guess, Alan, Matt, and those.
Of the scenic, or natural scenic historic resources chapter?
Yes, is there a date on that? That references.
Um, yeah.
Use today's, cause that'll be the final draft.
Um, let me tell you the number that's on it.
There was a. With the updates that we sent today.
What, yeah, what they said.
Oh.
Well, let's make that a little bit easier.
So, how are you gonna handle the presentation?
Well, hold on, hold on, first we gotta fasten up. So, the motion is to send our final draft of the natural scenic historic resources chapter to the select board.
Well, 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 let's rethink that, um. Let's make a motion, I'll make a motion to um. Uh, move this to final draft, uh, through, just, that's it, just. What we do with it after that, you know, is it, are we, are we sending it to the select board for?
Um, I don't know if it's so much we're sending it to them, we're just gonna present what we have. We're not, yeah, we're not, we're asking for their comments and things, but we're not asking for their approval necessarily.
That's why the motion I'm making is only to approve this as a final draft.
Right, with the small corrections.
That's funny.
So we have a motion on the floor to send, uh.
Sorry, not to send it.
We have a motion on the floor for the natural scenic and historic resources chapter to be moved to final draft with minor corrections. Alright, so Mike is second, or Mike had made the motion and uh, Ryan seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay, and any abstentions.
Yeah, that puts the checkmark on it.
Big green checkmark.
Alright, that feels good.
Yay, yay, yay.
In three years, we can do the next.
So I'm gonna ask my question, is how are we gonna handle the presentation? Is, are you always yourself on it, are you looking for support from the board members, or what, what's the, what's, what's your thought?
Well, I would be happy to have the board members who worked on it, go and present. I'd be happy to support and go.
I don't think anybody did any more work than you did.
Yeah, it's, you're really the.
I, I mean, Hank goes through these things so thoroughly, I just sort of glance over it.
The brain behind the operation.
Oh, I don't know. That's a good point, this, this select board probably wants to see representation.
Sure, alright.
Alright, I'm dead in my ass, if I hear you guys. Another good box of good funnies, mine is funny.
I will also attend.
Alright, so they.
Exactly. We'll drive separately.
Maybe even ask the town manager to put it early on the.
Yeah, seriously, tell them I got a.
Alrighty, moving on to the flood resiliency chapter.
I believe many changes to this.
Sixty-nine.
So, seven or eight hundred, nine hundred pages to this one, too? No, two nineteen. Yeah, right.
What are you saying, the number of pages in this packet?
No, the number of lines in this.
Oh, yeah, no, it's like, yeah, two hundred something.
Or at least get a good dent and then get us something more.
Flood resiliency, Howard, how much of this is changing?
Very, very little.
I think you said that already.
Yeah, so he added.
You see the red lines in there, the.
Yeah, small things. The, the main thing was that one paragraph that was reworked, so we wanna focus on that two point two, that's pretty much it.
So I have a comment on one fifty-eight.
That's, that's, we're, you're going too fast, man.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're on the screen section. There is no two fifty-one.
One fifty-eight, there is no driveway permit application.
It should say highway access.
It's just a highway. Don't have a driveway permit, we're thinking about writing a law, but. So that needs to change. And um, because then the second sentence is the goal is to evaluate flood response on the driveways. Inside the driveways away from known flood prone areas, we have no bylaw that regulates that, um, understanding of this. I think it's a great idea, but it, it, unless we put this in here to say it's supposed to be driveway bylaw. I just when I read that, I was like, well, okay, so it was really backing this up. Is it more a nice statement to say, and, you know, it's a good thing to do all these things, but we don't have a driveway permit. Application, you might realize this was in the previous one before you even edited it, right?
So, so you could change it to say the town should um. Create a driveway permit application process, and then all of this stuff can stay, the goal is to evaluate flood risks.
Yes, that's where, that's where that's where I would do. Cause I have a rough track of a driveway file, it's very rough, getting comments from. Fire chief. Okay, so we'll change, I make that one a change, then I had. One hundred, Howard, um. So, um, my question was, did we adopt the flood mitigation standard?
Um, the town has, I don't know if it's this board or what. Yeah, is there, that has been part of our ranking, is you have to have these things in place.
Because it changes our rebranding.
Right, as they are in place, of course, that's. The thing that, the biggest issue really is that in this. Two thousand seventeen, uh, two thousand seventeen edition, we adopted the maps. Uh, by reference for the river quarters and the new theme of flood mapping. What we never got around to adopting the bylaws as well and that enforces it. So, the maps are there, they mean nothing without the bylaw. So, but that's a separate issue from the town plan. Right, exactly, it's to adopt that bylaws.
If we could adopt the bylaw, then there's sufficient language and there's some more to support that.
Right, and references, they have to learn, this is everything else.
Is there an objective for that? Under recommendations or something? So you, you said, uh, by adopting this bylaw, we should have somewhere down there as an objective. Well, I can rework the, the recommendation section into the, the same format that we have going, um, and add an objective to do that.
So the two oh three fully integrated flood, which leads to planning and state federal flood hazard regulations into.
Okay, we can nest it under that. Okay.
On one sixty, the sentence says, streams that can normally be crossed year round simply by walking over them may turn into a flash flood. Torrential river. Hmm, it's a little awkward, like it should say, may turn, may during a flash flood.
There's a number of places in here that, that able to do a better job of wording it, or to. Didn't wanna drag this thing out for three weeks on wordsmithing revisions, that changed the media, so that's why I didn't.
Whole paragraph is kind of just all tailored for driveways and stuff there. One eighty-nine, the brothers driveway permits event.
Well, obviously that was the intention at that point in time to be about that, because it's mentioned in here through or for the.
Well, we definitely have a feeling town land.
Um, the, that, that, the, the addition at one sixty-three, one sixty-four. Driveway should also be designed to divert water away from roadside dishes, uh, so as not to exacerbate, but you know, go on culverts. Uh, um, I, I think that that, uh, it is wordsmithing, but I think it, uh. Um, away from roadside ditches as much as, as, as. Much as possible, frequently, as often as possible, um. You, sometimes you might not be able to get away from that, and that's part of what Ray's working on now through grants is. Uh, the fluvial connection of um, our, our ditches and waterways and stuff to, 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 so, so that. Yeah, things are better, but, I, I, I mean, I. I, I'm just saying that, I, 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 I don't wanna, I, I know this is the town plan, it's not a zoning bylaw, but, but yeah, you gotta be careful not to get into the place where you're setting up. Somebody for saying, well, you can't run it into that ditch.
No, no, I just, I was trying to get.
Okay.
The efficient train redirect water so it doesn't run right down the driveway into the ditch and off along the culverts. If you have the ability to direct the water off to the side somewhere so it doesn't immediately went to culverts, that's an objective.
Almost like filtered through the lawn or something like that.
Well, it's just as where possible or something.
Yeah, yes, yeah, but, yeah, but I, but I think, I think by adding wherever possible, I think, uh, driveway should be designed to divert water with roadside dishes wherever possible. So as not to exacerbate, I think it, and it just. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I mean, because it's something that's possible.
Where, 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 I think where possible, because. Where 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 I think where possible, because it really consists of a geological uh landscape.
Yeah, and and I was thinking as often as possible because more frequently means less volume.
Well, but I think when you say, I think when you say wherever possible, you look at the geographical. Slopes and that what's naturally there, and that's gonna mean, whoop, you can do it, you got it, that's where you want to go. Which means as often, that's.
Often as possible. Sort of does, and it doesn't, you know, I don't care to to discuss further, but I like my lady slightly better, just so you know.
Alright, so um.
I feel like we're pretty close.
Wow, I'm already ready to say let's send this to the final draft, so it's.
Uh yeah, I'm.
Um.
It is not written as in the same format as the other chapters.
With the goals policies?
Yeah.
Uh yeah, I would say when we say we're sending these things to final draft, I think. There is at the end, I want to come back to that, the organization of those things, so yeah, the the con- the content. And then the recommendations or something we'll revisit.
So uh just to say future or. I would say once we put these things like, okay, we're done wordsmithing them, and then you're just putting like the goals and statutes and stuff like that there, we start off with the caveat of. We already did so, like it was part of this.
We're not talking about that anymore, it's done.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
One order, we've already.
Just nick it right there and move on, just the layout.
You've already voted on it, discussion's over.
But next week, you might have forgotten what you like.
Does not. Then you start with a motion to reconsider.
Probably by the time we've gone through all the chapters and then worked through the goals and recommendations, this, we have to have a hearing and all those kinds of things, and if we have little catches, then we can do it at that point.
Yes.
So let's uh.
Make a motion to move uh flood resiliency to final draft. With 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 uh discussion uh changes from this evening.
Alright, so we have a motion to send the flood resilience, to move the flood resilience chapter to final draft with minor changes. Uh Mr. Todd made the motion, Mr. Beach seconded that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And any abstentions? Cool, another big green check mark.
Howard's going to the select board.
Um I am looking at the time and saying we should probably leave utilities and facilities chapter for the next meeting.
Can I ask you a general question as we go through it? Um some of the, what I gave to you had some highlighted stuff and some stuff already changed, is there any rhyme or reason at this point to the highlights? Is it just stuff that was already in there? I think when I highlighted it, it was. Basically a a comeback to and get get confirmation from the managers of those things.
And I didn't take it out because I was unsure of why you had things highlighted.
Okay.
So. Uh and then I think. I just wanted to make the. You know, for thinking about every century, thinking about four point two weekend, and I don't make them, but. Add a paragraph in there and I'll send that to you for the next distribution for my Thursday application, we get in the package, if if you're going to have a special meeting.
I am all for that.
Well, let's get to that discussion.
Yeah.
Uh motion to table um. Uh utilities and facilities tonight, Mary, thank you. Uh to the. Uh what what's the date today, what's the date, today's the thirteenth, twenty nine?
Today's fifteen, so it is twenty ninth, this is.
Fifteen?
Yep.
Really?
Oh, yeah, that's right, it is.
Estimated taxes. Who what?
Estimated taxes.
That'll. Oh, okay, today's the fifteenth, so seven days is twenty second.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Seven days is twenty second, you're right, but we're the next meeting will be the twenty ninth. Twenty second is the select board.
Okay, okay, so the next meeting that we're gonna have is gonna be the twenty ninth. So so to table this uh the facilities, utilities and facilities chapter to um. Uh September twenty, uh Memorial Hall, six thirty.
So we have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Todd to move the core table discussion on facilities chapter until September twenty ninth, was that seconded?
Yeah.
Second. Brian has seconded the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye, oh, sorry, discussion. Yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is tabled. Discussion for future items uh uh or agendas, I butchered that, guys, um we're.
What's the, what's the, what's the next chapter that'll go with um?
I got education done and that's, well, all my notes and stuff on, ready to go, that should be a pretty quick one, because utilities is gonna take us to a minute.
Now, is that now, is that gonna be on the twenty ninth also?
Yeah, we might as well file it in there.
Maybe you can tell us what takes some time. Okay.
Let's do.
We can also have economic development.
Should we revisit the land use stuff that we have to do too, before we get too far away from that?
Mm hmm. Revisit the land use stuff.
Do we have to talk about the land use chapter, do we have to go back over that one or anything else, or?
I don't know, did did we? I guess uh we didn't vote to move it to final, so yeah, we could do that.
Oh, it's so good. Are we, I mean, I thought there was, are we doing anything else with that one, guys, or?
I'll bring I'll bring up another another draft. I don't, yeah, there there was a lot of changes that were there, so it wasn't like one of the middle ones, so, yeah, I'll I'll do that, yeah.
Yeah, I I should.
Um.
One final look over on that, uh so we'll have uh. Clean look at the land use chapter, we'll have utilities, facilities and education, our next one. Uh that's enough for that meeting, I'd say.
Yep.
That's a, and I would say that we put the land use last on that, so we do uh. Let's do natural or utility.
Why would you put that on my own? Because then we're gonna finish it.
I was gonna say, I think we're gonna knock that one out, be done, done and over.
Yeah.
If you put it last, we might get there and say, let's let's table that, and now we're out another.
So we'll do land use, education and utilities.
Yeah.
Very good with that, cool. Any other business that could be legally discussed, uh Ryan, for a discussion and uh.
Well, hang on to.
We also.
Hang on, hang hang on to, you you, we we just had a. Well. Procedurally, we just had a motion to table something, so you can't put education ahead of that. Very, very terrible, we can rear. But if we stand, uh have to make you, you 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 could, but. It, you know, I I I think I think land use, utilities and then education, and I think you're fine at that point. Just do them in that order.
That's fine.
Do we also need to set the next meeting that we just had said we were gonna?
We're gonna have to do that in there, other other new business or or other business.
Oh, yeah.
The board, the board doesn't need to make a motion on that, we can just warn them.
Um true. That's true.
I'm just planning on putting a.
Though if we make the motion, the stuff, it's in the minutes and it gets broadcast. So it does help to get get it just in, you know.
It's my motion, guys.
It does, yeah, we, yeah.
I'll make a motion, uh yeah, meeting day for September twenty ninth at the park Memorial Hall, six thirty P M for pledge mission.
I second that motion.
Uh any special? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, any opposed? And any abstentions?
Who's gonna call me to remind me?
I'll send you an email.
It's a bonus that I remember.
Email I will not get, send me a text.
It's a bonus.
Maybe I can add your number, actually, I think your email, sometimes your email keeps picking back, yeah, I'll add it to my email list to get my emails to your phone.
Ryan, you have the permit, something you want to draw?
Sure, yeah, real quick, um so fiscal year, I did fiscal year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four. Um in twenty twenty four, there were forty two permits. Um twenty twenty five, there was fifty one permits. Um in twenty twenty four, there were five new single family homes, three accessory dwelling units. And one commercial space converted to a a single family. Um in twenty twenty five, there were six. New single family homes, two new two family homes and three, again, three ADUs. Um. So, so in other words, each year there was there was nine and then eleven new dwelling units added to town. Um. New accessory structures in twenty twenty four, there was fourteen, in twenty twenty five, there was eleven. Building alterations like decks and additions and things in twenty twenty four, there's twelve, in twenty twenty five, it was eleven. Um subdivisions. In twenty twenty four, there were four, uh well, I included, there were three boundary line adjustments and one two lot subdivision. And then in twenty twenty five, there was one two lot subdivision and one boundary line adjustment. And then as far as commercial things go, in twenty twenty four, there was one new business, which was a contractor storage yard, there was one sign permit and one home business. And then in twenty twenty five, there were three signs, one accessory structure, one home business, which was two permits, that was the um. The childcare home that got permitted once and then came back for that change, um and one change of use. So that's a a snapshot of what the permitting has been over those years.
So I I I think the average for the two years on on the home construction was ten.
Yeah.
Uh for the two years, uh so if we use the uh the base ten. Um how does that fit into the state's goal for for our town, for the number of houses we're supposed to have outside?
Yeah, maybe a little low, um. Yeah. But I I thought it was interesting to see that six of those were ADUs. Which is what sort of aligns with what we were kind of feeling like is gonna be something that's important to to increasing.
Yep.
Dwelling units. So there it is.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, boy, but Mike and Howard both fought over it there, so I'll have to go into a debate on that.
Well. Oh, no, I I thought that was you asking for, that was Howard that made it?
I definitely.
Oh, oh, oh. My second the motion, huh?
Aye.
Again, the motion.
Nice to ask.
Good job today, guys, good discussion.